I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States.
For which it stands, one nation.
One nation.
God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Hi, Jason. Welcome. Um. Gabby, why don't you go ahead with the roll call?
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Turkleven?
Here.
Mr. Regginoato?
Here.
Mr. Shultis?
Here.
Chairman Porter?
Here.
Okay, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion. This is Andy.
Hi, Andy.
I'll second it. Lois?
Lois is gonna second it. Andy made the motion. All in favor?
Thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
That works still.
I said aye too.
Is Steve here?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. Alright. Okay. I'm constantly pressing my thing here, so don't mind me. Okay. Like to make a motion that we open a public hearing for Basami mobility?
I'll make that motion. Lois Smith.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Are we communicating here?
Yep.
Okay, good. Good, good.
I was thinking the same thing. Thank you.
We think.
There doesn't seem to be that much discussion or anybody that is saying anything, or the applicants here?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was supposed to chime in at that point. Excuse me.
No, no. It's up to the chairman. Yeah, we're all here. We're all here, Mr. Chairman.
So, okay, so we're okay? Go to public hearing. Everybody in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Regginoato here? There he is. Hello.
Hello. Okay, sir. What would you like to say, in favor of your Mr. Basami?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Um, I was expecting some sort of report back as if, I believe it went to, the neighborhood was notified of our request for variance.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, the only phone call I received, aside from people just curious what it was, was somebody concerned about traffic going through the neighborhood. I guess they already have issues with people speeding up and down the dead end road, and she said it was not posted, the speed limit wasn't posted. So she's gonna try to reach out to the town board about putting in a, the speed limit sign, posting it at, I think it's 30 miles an hour and/or speed bumps. But that was her major concern, but I told her this board doesn't handle that. That would be a town board issue. And she can approach them at that point.
Was there anyone else at all who approached any of the members on this issue? I received nothing.
Yeah, I did not receive anything else but that.
Okay. Well. Mr. Basami, if you want to say something nice about yourself, this is a great time.
Um, about myself? Wow, okay. Yeah, I thought I looked a lot worse than I did until I saw myself on the camera here. That's, that's good. Listen, thank you very much. I, 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 we're not gonna let you down. I can assure you that way. We're very considerate neighbors. We really do our best and hope, and as we've done in the previous locations that we've set up, we've been, we've become a pretty good member of the community. So if you hear from us in the future, it's probably gonna be, hopefully it's gonna be something really positive. I do appreciate your consideration, all your questions that you asked last time. I hope we answered them well, and if there's ever, if there's any questions that you have of us now, feel free to, to fire away.
Anybody have any questions?
I say thank you for coming to our town and bringing your business to our, I think it's awesome, and I think what you're doing is wonderful for the population that are really gonna utilize this and benefit from it. So, thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. I appreciate it. Those, those, those are the kind of sentiments that keep us going. So I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Well, and it is a good location. I mean, it is, it's, it's the right, it's a good location. You have a nice landlord, a nice building.
So far, he's made this a pleasure to, to.
Yeah, you've got, and you, and it's a really good location and a good business for you and a good business for the town of Ulster too, so it's great.
Yep. Good.
Doesn't really impact the neighbors a lot. It's great.
Yeah, I hope so. You know, I hope that they're all gonna be, they can rely on us too. We're always, we're always helping out our neighbors locally in our, in our current location. So I think, I believe that we're set up in the right place for the right reason and the right surroundings. So we're pretty optimistic about it, pretty positive.
Hmm, good luck to you.
Thank you so much. So I guess without any, if there's no more questions of that, what, what would be our next step? What, how do I?
Your next step's gonna be we take a vote.
Alright.
Did we hear anything from county?
I did not know.
It got sent, right?
I bel, I believe it did not need to go to county, actually. When I looked back, I didn't have to send the previous one to county, so I didn't send this one.
I voted on something on this property twice in the past 10 years, and we didn't have to go to county for any of them.
Nope, we didn't have to go.
The only reason I'm asking is we sent the last used bearings to county.
But we're clear on this. So I would recommend that we approve, Mr. Basami. Ten seconds.
Second.
Okay. Do you have a little one there playing around your feet?
No, they heard the ring doorbell. We have that and they're, they're playing to go off.
Scott runs around like crazy when he hears that thing. Okay, so we have a first and a second. Okay, let's do the vote on this. All in favor in the long roll?
Aye.
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 Gabby?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turkleven?
Yes.
Mr. Regginoato?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes. Okay, Gabby, we'll get with you, Mr. Basami, and Sheila will tell you what the next step is.
Fantastic. Thank you all very, very much.
Good luck. Thank you.
If you could do us one big favor, tell the people of Long Island that Old Town of Ulster is open for business.
Don't worry, I'm gonna hang, yeah, magnets on the refrigerator. They're coming right up. I appreciate it.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Do we have a motion to come out of the public hearing?
So moved. I'll make that motion that we come out of the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Future, future reference, close the public hearing before we vote. We'll open the public hearing here. Comment, close the public hearing, and then we can go on to, to vote.
Well, that technicality hanging us up in our vote, our move. Where's Jason? Jason?
Yes.
Will that technicality that we took to vote before we came out of public hearing?
Uh, we're okay there, Mr. Chairman, but in the future, we should close the public hearing and then vote.
All right, another thing to write down for future reference. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we have a preliminary hearing now. Ruby Post Office, Tom Sutton.
Yes.
1165 Main Street. Mr. Sutton, how are you?
I'm doing fine. Yourself?
Oh, just Danny.
That's good. Okay, um.
So tell us a little bit what you want to do.
My Ruby Post Office is an existing building. Story was an apartment 20 years ago or so, and I want to turn it into an apartment. Or renovated as an apartment. The second floor, about 640 square feet.
Okay. Don't mind me. I'm pulling up the application.
Okay.
Which doesn't.
Working post office right now? Does anybody know?
It's a working post office.
Thank you.
That's what I wanted to say. Okay, that's what threw me off. I mean, I saw the application and the document you signed with the post office, and one part said leased, the other part said sold, the other part said leased. So you're leasing from the post office, correct?
Post office leases from me. I own the building.
You own the building? Thank you. Okay, that clarified a question that I had. There it is.
Just let me know where you'd like to view on the application.
So is it because it wasn't used in the past, maybe I heard wrong, 30 years or so for apartment upstairs that you had to go through this variance, or is it?
Yeah, I believe that. I believe that was sold after it's been vacant for a year or two, you have to go for a variance. Is that right, or?
I can clarify this. So it, it was a pre-existing non-conforming use. Actually, it predated our zoning code. Um, so once we adopted the zoning code, it was continued, allowed to continue. If at any point in time it discontinued for a period of two years, then it would have to revert back to whatever's allowed in that zoning district. And since it's been more than two years, by a little bit. Um, it would, it would have to go back, and what's a shame is that he's on the, the zoning line for the next zoning district, it would have been allowed use. I told, I just told him, pick the post office up and move it across the zoning line. We'd be all set.
It's, it's that close?
Literally. Property line is the zoning district change.
I see. All right. And just from, from what? What's the zoning that it said now?
I'll load it up as we speak.
It's an R30 now.
Thanks, Gabby. Is an R60 next to it, or is it a mixed use next to it? The zone.
Next to it.
Thank you.
I'm trying to figure out which one.
You know, it's gonna be up to the, the planning board to make sure you have parking and everything else. It's really up to us to look and see that, you know, you're in a residential, it isn't basically more or less a residential area anyways, I see it. Um, so you're just really asking to go to the public hearing if the public has any problem with it. Um, you know, I don't like doing spot zoning, but that, it's not like you're going way outside the boundary of, you know, and putting it, dotting it in the middle of a completely different zone. So, you know, I, I have no problem moving it to a public hearing.
Yeah, there's adjacent three parcels. This almost looks like spot zoning. There's three parcels and they're zoned local commercial.
Yeah.
And they're surrounded by residential.
Right. There's a house and, and there's also a trailer, Mr. Sutton, that's there, a house, the hen. Um.
Henderson Heating and, yes, Henderson Heating's to my, to the right, and then there's houses across the street.
And the head is doing, Mike have a trailer still there.
There's a trailer there, there's another rental house, and he's got his shop in the back, run his heating business.
And the bus stop still stops right there in that parking lot. Um, there was a young boy that was hit there years and years ago by UPS truck who, um, lost his life there.
Right, that was Joey Henderson. That was a.
That's right. So we're adding to that. Just, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of, it is a parking lot that is used by children. No, and please don't take it, Mr., personally, I'm here to, on your behalf, on everybody else's behalf. So I just have to share the information that I'm aware of and.
I don't, I don't believe there is actually a bus stop there. I know the bus stop stops in front of Burn Lane and, and Church Street. It picks up the kids in the morning. But I've never seen it actually stop at the post office.
That's actually where he got off the bus the day of kindergarten, was right there at your post office.
I was understanding he was in the yard running his bicycle, and he rode behind the UPS truck.
No. No.
Topic for another day.
Right.
That's, um, an interesting topic. It's a good point about the traffic and the children.
Well, in reference to the parking, in reference to the, in reference to everything going on in that area, I'm all for creating more housing. I truly, truly am. Um, just in reference to where the extra cars are gonna go is my concern.
Blacktop parking lot right there in front of the post office.
All right, let Kevin speak. He has a question.
Um, the, the post office, how busy is the post office? I was up there today, and I didn't see any traffic whatsoever.
The most you see is three cars in there that I see. Usually, it's only one person at a time.
Are they, are they opened like a normal post office, or?
No, they're only open, open a half a day.
Half a day, okay.
Four and a couple hours on Saturday morning.
Okay. Yeah, it's a little different than a.
It is open 24 hours. People go in and out whenever they want. It leaves, doors open all the time.
Okay.
I love that. I love that.
Well, hopefully we don't get that on the internet.
That's right there. Is there still a paint shop there that, uh, I mean, the continuity of the neighborhood pretty much on one side goes with it and the other side.
Well, you're talking about your Trumpy service spot, the old Ruby.
Yeah, yes, yes.
It's there, but he does very little work there now.
Right. I didn't, I haven't been up there forever.
I was born here.
Oh, very cool.
Would you like a, a motion to move it to a public hearing, Mr. Chairman? I'm happy to make that. I mean, it's, it's obviously gonna be up to the planning board if they.
I want to hear if anyone else has any more questions to direct, and I haven't heard from, uh.
Okay.
Uh, Steve yet?
No, I know there's a, there's also a haircut place there too, isn't there, Mr. Sutton?
No more, no.
No.
No, that, that, that was Anderson's daughter. She got killed in a car accident a couple years ago.
Well, does anybody else have any more questions for the gentleman?
There's parking on both sides of that building, correct?
No, only in the front of the building. It's, it's a park, a blacktop, the entire length of the property in the front.
Behind it is what?
Pardon me?
Isn't there like a road in behind it, like a driveway?
There is no road. It's, it's all brush and stuff. I've actually taken my brush off and cleaned it out and stuff like that. You could drive down there. Actually, it used to be a gas station, and I think the cars used to drive around the back, but nobody's driven in the back in a long time. Okay.
Would it be a one bedroom? Is that what you expect? Maybe a couple or a single person?
Right now, I, I have, I have a tenant, a, a, a single girl about 22 years old. She lives right here in Ruby. Her father come and asked me if I could build her an apartment.
Oh.
It would just be one vehicle really parked?
One, one vehicle, yes.
For now.
Yeah, you know, to have company, it might get two.
Right.
Many times I'll go by and somebody in neighborhood's having a party or something, there'll be four, five or six cars here on Sunday.
Just for a one bedroom?
Yes.
You have a great fire department up there too. A lot of the guys and the girls work for the town of Ulster up there, and there's that gun club up there.
Right.
There's good people up there.
Yeah, but my son's, is, is captain in a fire department.
Oh, really? That's great.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the committee? Move it ahead to public hearing or motions?
Um, I'll make the motion to move it to a public hearing if you like.
Or you like? Any second.
I'd be delighted.
All right, thank you.
I'll, I'll second that.
All right. Do we need a roll call gap?
Yeah, we could do that. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turkleven?
Yes.
Mr. Regginoato?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
And just out of curiosity, how long do you think it'll take you to finish the apartment? And, and just out of curiosity.
When I'm allowed to start, probably take about two months.
Wow, good for you.
Coming into the right time of year for that. Well, thank you very much. Um, Gabby will get hold of you.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. I broke with my order, but, oh, I didn't. I'm looking at the, uh, lock, drop box. Okay.
Hmm.
All right. I just tapped the wrong button, and here we go. All right, next on the order is Costco Heritage.
Hi, this is Jim Studoff. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Jim.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Yeah, my, uh, my laptop doesn't have a, a camera on it. It's probably a safety feature, I would imagine. So, uh, uh, I don't, I don't know exactly what the procedure is, but what would you like to hear from me, or how does that work?
Basically, it works. Why do you need a variance for what you want to do?
Um, due to an oversight by myself, we were asked by the management of the company to put a fence up on two places on the property, one out by Sawkill Road, and I did not know about the requirement for a four-foot fence as opposed to what I put up, which was a six-foot fence. Uh, so we're trying to get this squared away so that we, A, apply properly and ask for a variance for the size of the fence. Uh, we, we have to, uh, we have to follow mandates of federal regulations under 40 CFR 112, which has to do in our industry with spill prevention, control and countermeasure plans, and we have one on the Sawkill Road Road Facility. Uh, we have four facilities in, in the county, actually in the area, in the valley, and each one of them has six-foot fencing. Uh, and that's what we have, uh, we have done to delay people from getting into our properties so that nothing can happen to the vehicles that are parked on the property with fuel in them, ready to make deliveries to our customers.
I think all.
So we put, I'm, I'm sorry, we.
Um, I was looking, how, how far are you or close are you to the nearest runoff into the Sawkill Creek? I believe that's right in front of your property as well as the back, so you're in a, aren't you?
Not.
I guess there are tambers with your equipment. I understand why the law is written this way. You'll be right into the Sawkill Creek. The contaminants almost within a half hour.
Uh, yes, that we, we do, the property does back up to Sawkill Creek.
All right. I'm just trying to paint the picture.
Yep.
So basically, EPA is telling you, you've gotta do this.
Uh, that's, that's correct, and what we, what we have is we, we put the 75-foot fence on an angle across the front of the property, and that gate is, uh, once it's approved, if it is, hopefully it is for the variance, would be, uh, open, uh, from 3:00 in the morning when one of our mechanics comes in until 11:00 at night. So it'd be open most of the time. It's a 24-foot opening for the gate, uh, and, uh, so we, that's what we'd be doing, and, uh, and it would be closed from 11 to 3:00. We do have an interior gate that is also six feet that's in the center of the property, which blocks off the other access to the, to the vehicles. The reason that this was chosen by the management of the company was, instead of spending untold money in order to enclose the entire fence area to protect the trucks, uh, this was a, an option to keep vehicles from getting to our vehicles, and that's the main thing.
Thank you for answering my question.
You're welcome.
Anyone else has some questions?
Hmm.
Um, hi, Jim. Do the, uh, do the fences open mechanically, or are they, do you have to push them open?
Uh, there is a electronic operator on the front, Kevin. It's, uh, it's, uh, that's gonna be one where it's, it's not opening and closing every time someone comes in. That's the way our other facilities operate. Uh, but we'll, we've got it set up so that it'll be 3:00 in the morning, it'll be open, 11:00 it'll be closed, and it is electronic operating. The, the fence that is further in the property is manual. It's, uh, it's two gates that be closed manually.
Okay. So the, the one in the front is on a timer?
Uh, no, it's actually, uh, it's actually a, a, a remote that'll be open, uh, opening it, or it could be a button that's under lock and key to open or close.
Okay.
Jim, Steve Shultis, how are you?
Good, Steve. How you doing?
I'm, I'm very well, thank you. You're not looking to put a fence parallel to Sawkill and parallel to, um, to the Asopis to close in that, that side of it. You just have the two access points, which is basically closing off where the trucks are parked, correct? A couple spots in the front and a couple in the, um, the majority in the rear past the step in field.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. We, we're not, we're not gonna enclose it. We have no intention of putting any more fencing up than what we've already done. Uh, what we're doing is using the ditch that's in front of the property, which, uh, we, we have unfortunately seen evidence that that keeps vehicles out of the property, because some people have, uh, have tanked it in, in that ditch. Uh, so we're using that natural terrain to, uh, to not have to do anything parallel and any further fencing.
They're, and they're fine with that, because people can still access it by foot though, correct? But that's.
That's, that, that's true. They can.
Okay. And, uh, the fueling station out back, will you reroute the traffic on, on the Eagle Diesel side to make that a two-way now?
Uh, yes, when the gate isn't open, that's what we're gonna allow, so people can go around and access it 24 hours.
Okay.
Steve, I had to make it so that the gate in the back would allow for your former tractor trailers to be able to back into their spot.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic that goes in there, yes.
There is.
Is this because you had, um, previous situations there that, because when I listened to you, your opening statement, it was because of the EAP you stated with the protection, the guidelines that you had to follow, and then you mentioned that it was to protect your vehicles. So it, it sounds like it may be for both.
It, it is, it is for both. EPA is what we have to do for the spill prevention, so that nobody does anything to, uh, to cause any spills from the vehicles that are there. Um, but, but it is also Hop Energy, uh, who is our parent company. It's also to have the vehicles under secure fencing.
But my question, I think, let me be a little more direct. You said to keep others out of your vehicles. Do you have a situation with the others in your vehicles?
No, we're, we're, we're worried about, uh, we're trying to delay people from, uh, having a vehicle go into the property. Quite honestly, when we're not there, uh, and, and maybe stealing fuel from the trucks or, uh, or causing damage to the trucks that, that might cause a spill on the property or a loss of, loss of product. We, we haven't had any issues with that. Um, but that's, we're, we're also looking to not have any.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. This is Andy.
Hi, Andy.
Hello. The, the, um, the Hop. Hello. The, the, um, the Hop Energy requirements. Are these self-imposed requirements from the company or are these requirements that are made specifically by either your insurance company or regulations that are mandated by the state? Or are these self-imposed requirements from the LLC? I'm just looking at the reason for the variance. I'm looking at the actual application, so that's my question.
Uh, it's, it's actually, it's actually both. We do, we do have the spill prevention, control and countermeasure plan that, that is mandated by the Environmental Protection Agency is, and enforced by the, by the state D E C does, does call for us to, to have fencing to protect the property. And this is what we chose to do. And again, as I had said previously, it is, it is also hop energy policy to have the vehicles secured by fencing wherever possible.
And, and, but, but with the EPA thing, that's where you decided to do it or that's where they required? Because this was easier. I'm only asking because I, I, you know, I get putting up the fencing and then coming and saying, oh, we did it. And now we have to make it, it, it puts us in a, right? The fence is already up and erected, correct?
Yes, unfortunately.
Yes, so it puts us in a, it puts us in a, in a bad position and, and no, no disrespect, but I'm just trying to ask, was this just done for ease without looking and, and reading the guides first? And is where it was put by the EPA guidelines? And I also wanted to know why was it put up without coming, you know, especially being that close. It's only ten, it's ten feet away from the, from the, from, you know, so that's a, the thirty-foot variance is pretty, pretty significant in my, my view.
Uh, the, the, the reason, unfortunately, the reason for coming after it was put up was because I had never put up a fence before and didn't realize the requirement to get either a permit or a variance for a fence. So that, that's just on me. I, I was told by the management of the company what they would want to have as far as placement of the fence. And so I picked that up and went with it. And that's, that's why we, that's, that's why it was chosen to be where it is. And, you know, the fact that it is, is a combination of the spill prevention plan requirements and, and the mandates of the, of the company.
And I've been, I've been, I've been out of town and I really would like to take a drive-by. Having just the survey and the application is really not a lot of information for us to go on. Um, but that, you know. Is it just me that feels that way?
Oh, I have a question. I'm, I'm by there a lot because my, my daughter and son-in-law live up in the town of Sawkill. So yeah, I'm always by that place. But I do have a question, a simple one. I'm gonna just maybe I'm piggybacking on what Andy brought up, but I want to ask it anyway. If you weren't doing it for a corporation request for security for your vehicles, because you want to make them safe, would you still have to put it up because of the EPA request, read the EPA standard?
Yes, and the, the reason for that, and, and I don't want to mislead you on it, the reason for that is that we, we have stated it in the plan that that's what it is. And, and so I can't necessarily go to a, a regulation that says you have to have a six-foot fence, but we have to, we have to protect the property and we have to, we, we are under mandate to protect the, the vehicles from being tampered with and to make sure that we are, are preventing spills on the property. And, and that's, and that's part of what we have, we have to do. So we view the fence as being that.
Which part of this is actually more than what you need to do? In other words, if you have a fence up, which you do, meeting the EPA standard, which unless you have us telling me it has to be six feet, okay? Uh, the other part is telling me that it's basically your corporate that wants to see it larger, correct?
It, it is, it is both. And it, it is, it is, it is, it is the corporate mandate that is causing the fence to be put up. And it is by mandate of the, the spill prevention plan from the EPA that we have to adhere to. So.
But I'm sorry, but by the, the map that you're giving us, where the, where it is, it's, it's just inconclusive to me. It's not enough information for me to even say I'm fine. You know, I'm just, I don't feel like it's enough. I do have to go drive by. I'm sorry. I've been, I've been out of town, so.
Not a problem.
My apologies.
I think I can clarify this. It seems that the EPA handed a mandate to corporate and told them to come up with a plan to meet their requirements. So corporate came up with a plan that meets the requirements of the EPA mandate, and that's what they handed to him to install. So it wasn't that it came from corporate as just put a six-foot fence. EPA said, here's what you have to do to meet the spill response, the spill protection. They came up with a plan. The plan sufficed for EPA, for their proposal, so they turned around and gave it to him to implement.
That's correct.
So it is essentially an EPA mandate that you have to do this by, not a corporate mandate.
Right.
I'm just trying to separate the two.
But well, I think
But the EPA, but the EPA mandate could have been adjusted had you come to the, to us to make sure that it was done properly. I, I, it's not an area that's a sensitive area. I'm just trying to move forward and set precedence moving forward as we always do. That's all.
Yeah, well, we've had it at, at, at our other facilities as well as, as, uh, and again, we have, we have two what are known as major oil storage facilities, and then we have two what are known as petroleum bulk storage facilities that are that are smaller in scope than the major oil storage facilities. And we just have to make sure, and, and the other facilities have barbed wire on the top of the fence, and we realize that that's not going to look good and not going to be something we're going to want to do. But it is absolutely our responsibility to make sure that we are keeping people out of the facilities so that, so that we're delaying at best or at worst to make sure that people don't, don't tamper with the vehicles.
So, Mr. Chairman, Miss, I believe Mr. Shultas had a question, but I, if, after Mr. Shultas, I'd like to ask a question if that's okay.
Certainly, no. This is the time we're going to get the information. So, those questions.
Mr. Shultas is, can go before me. He would spend waiting, I think.
Jim, this is what Hop wanted you to do to secure the facility, correct?
That's correct.
Put up those two fences. And, and your variance that you're asking for is what, on the setbacks or the size of the gates?
Well, certainly the size of the gates to be six-foot. And, and that is to, to have a more robust fence to keep people from driving through it and also to support the operator that we have, the electronic operator. Um, the, the other, the other part of it is that I, I'm not sure that I understand totally the setback rule because I'm, I'm assuming that the, that when you talk about a structure that, in a setback, the fence would be a structure that would pertain to a setback. Uh, it's not just a building. Is that, is that correct? Yes. So, so, so the fence, so the fence, so, so it has to do with the, the setback being, you know, closer to the road than than is a standard.
That would be the only thing that, and, and I'm new on here, but that's just a question. When that fence is open in the front, on the front corner.
Yep.
How close does that put that into the, I know there's a ditch there.
Yep.
Say if the county came along to repurpose that ditch and clean it. Is it encroaching on anything that's owned by the county? That would put the fence in the way? That's just something I don't know personally. But how close is the fence to the road now, once it's open from three in the morning to eleven at night?
It's, uh, the, the post that's at the end of it is nineteen feet from the road.
Okay. The gate extends beyond the post when it's open?
No, it's, uh, it's much short of the post.
Okay. That would be my only next, and something we don't do, I'm sure. I don't know. Like I said, I'm, I'm new to this, but encroaching on, encroaching on the county right away. If they need to
Does this have to go to the county?
Is it okay if I ask a question before we end it?
I, I think it has to go to the county because it's on a county road.
All right, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Lois.
Okay, so I have some questions since listening to the, our other board members, Mr. Chairman and yourself. They really brought up some great points. So you said there that you participated in six other projects. You have six other facilities that you participated in in helping establish in this area or in whichever area. Is this your first project that I've put together?
Um, well, let me, let me clarify. We have, we have four total facilities.
Just ask, wait, my question directly. Is this your first time establishing and working with engineers to, to put up a fence and to follow the guidelines that you're required to follow?
That's correct. It is the first time.
It's your first time. Did you contact, did you speak to Gabby or Warner Inspector at all previous to this? And previous to, were you part of the application process?
Uh, unfortunately, after the fact. I, I did not, I did not approach for a permit or a variance prior to
Did you partake in defense and talk with these engineers and probably whoever else was involved with the facility of organizing and structure and, and placing everything where it should be?
Oh, I, I was interfacing with the company that put up the fence, yes.
Right, so.
They did not, they did not advise me.
Um, if you were part of the application process at all or worked with the engineers that were here or fencing company even in our area, we have some great, great resources in our area and they're all well aware of. They work really well with our Town of Ulster Building Office in all, all ways. And I'm sure Gabby or Warren had spoken with anybody in reference to this project, the beginning of it, they would have definitely mentioned that you would need a permit. And I feel that, um, if it was your first project and you're truly unaware of, that you needed and were required to build in permit, I'm, I'm satisfied with that answer. Thank you.
If you're not alone in the people not getting permits for fences, you have no idea how many I come across.
Well, now
And they're putting my
In a residential, on a residential pro, project, I can get that with homeowners, but not in a commercial.
Uh, Jason and I were kicking back and forth. This has to go to the county, correct? What's that going to do to the timeframe? And how do we approach it at this point?
So I would, yes, this does go to the county. And I think Gabby can correct if I'm wrong, but it, we may not have enough time for the April meeting. So the public hearing may have to be in May, but Gabby can correct me on that.
The county is usually pretty good about getting me my comments back by the Monday or Tuesday prior to the meetings. Only thing is, we may not get comments back till day before or date of. So as long as the board's comfortable with that, um, we could probably still hold it on in April.
Then I would suggest moving to, uh, moving to a public hearing in April and proceeding that way.
I think we asked a lot of really good questions on this application, so.
Absolutely.
So if we go to a public hearing in April, we can probably ask them again, but we're not going to get any different answers for it. Okay, thank you very much. What's the pleasure of the committee?
So if it needs to go to county, what, what do we do? We shelf it until it comes back or?
I'll need a motion to send it to county and then a separate motion for a public hearing.
So we're looking at motions. I'm looking for the one for public hearing right now.
I'll make that motion, sir. I'll send, just send it to public, at the county.
Um, county or public hearing?
Um, whichever one you want right now. I have a question, Jason, a multitask.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm sorry.
Send it to public, I know it'll come back. Well, the motion for the county. Is there a second? To send it to public hearing? I think we want to second that.
I'll second it.
Okay, let's have a vote.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turkleven?
I'll send it to public hearing. Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultas?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
I think everybody has a right to their day in court, yes. So public hearing will be in April. Now, we have a motion to go to the county with this.
I'll make that
Oh, you got that motion, Lois. You got it, you got it. Congratulations. Andy, you want to second that?
Yes, please.
You're welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to go roll, roll call with this vote?
We'll do it to be safe. Ms. Smith?
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Turkleven?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultas?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes.
Is it okay if I ask Jay a question or Warren a question, one or the other? I'm sure both have, for me.
Sure, go right ahead. That's what they're here for.
Is, if, if he's not completed with the work, would there be an order of stay? Put on this application or no? Just a question, it is for myself.
So you're asking that if I had rolled upon it while they were working on it, would I have stopped it?
No, I'm asking if, if there's more work to be done on it right now. I don't know if it was finished. I didn't ride past Warren. So I don't know if it's going to continue. So my question is, is there a, a work stay order?
No, they're complete. It's finished.
Thank you. And one more question. We had an application previous, maybe last year, a year before, right? When all this COVID started, did the county send us something updating us in reference to questions that we sent to them?
They did send me an update. It's in the office. I don't have it on me at the moment, but I can send it out tomorrow when I get in.
You know what I'm talking about, right, Gabby?
The requirements of what needs to be sent to county and what doesn't need to be sent to county. They did send me something a few months back.
Yeah, I thought it was longer than that. I, I forgot exactly.
Okay. If we, no objections, let's move along to five below.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And who is the representative for five below?
Hi, Bill Lockit with SEMA. Uh, and we also have Julie Lepaca, who is also with SEMA, and we are here on behalf of Five Below.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to interject early on. Because this, this changes, the whole dynamics of this has changed drastically.
Oh.
The sign has gone, the actual sign has gone from three hundred eighty-six square feet to two hundred and twenty.
One hundred and twenty.
The actual sign is one hundred and twenty.
Okay.
What they're changing is they're changing the color of the storefront, which actually goes to planning. So what's before the board now is instead of that number I came up with was, I think it was a hundred and sixty-nine percent increase.
Yeah.
Is a ten it is a ten percent increase in the allotted sign square footage.
Okay.
I did not get this till this afternoon.
Yeah, thank you. And can I speak to that?
Certainly.
Yeah, that, as we were prepping for the meeting today, we, we, and we were reviewing the code and finalizing sort of the presentation. Um, we, we realized that there, there was really nothing in the sign code that was governing the blue area, uh, which is architectural ethos that was included in the square footage. And I think that was a mistake on our end in, in our interpretation of the variance. Um, so 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 to that point, I think what we're requesting, and we could be a little bit off, we can confirm that we were thinking we were asking for about a hundred and thirteen square foot today, which is actually only three square foot. Well, there's another question that if I could ask the board, we received an email from the landlord representative that said that a previous variance was granted for this property and that she believed the variance would carry through to the new tenant where they allowed two square feet for each linear foot as part of that variance, which it would be that she said two square foot. I have a copy of that email that I can share with the group as well here. But but in that, if if that were true and that previous variance carried through with five below, we would be entitled in effect about to, I think, a hundred and ten square feet. So if that were the case, two things. One, we would probably just ask five below to just go through the, you know, drop three square feet from the sign and and not take up your time.
Life isn't.
If the board is is okay with that. If not, we would go through the presentation essentially asking for approximately three additional square feet.
I don't understand in that two square feet. Warren, is that legit?
In in two thousand and three, your board, not necessarily your members.
Right.
Made a stipulation that for future tenants, undefined future tenants will use a ratio of two square feet for one linear feet of storefront. Their storefront is fifty-four feet, five inches, which comes out to roughly one hundred and nine square foot of signage would be allowed without any variances.
So, sir, if you kept it within that thing, you wouldn't even have to see us. You still would have to deal with the planning board.
Yeah, I and I, you know, Julie, I don't want to waste the board's time here. I I think we can just go back to five below and I mean, I'd be going through a twenty minute presentation here that, you know.
It's not gonna matter.
Yeah, yeah.
We all. Yeah.
Yeah. So so at at that point, as long as the board is okay with that, and that could be kind of captured on record for the permit expediting. We we think that would be that would be great for us, and we wouldn't need to go through the presentation.
Saying is you withdraw on your request for the variance.
Yeah, yeah. And and how does it? How does it get over to the zoning, though, on record that that two square feet is the allocation for or calculation for our sign application?
Because your sign application is going to come to me.
Okay, well, that helps. Thank you, sir.
So is your building permit?
Management Warren that signed that and advised him of that two thousand and three recommendation?
Did I? Did I recommend to who?
The two thousand and three recommendation in reference to the fee.
Right.
That they're allotted the two thousand and three, which is almost twenty years ago. All right, yeah, wow. Is it the same property management company that allotted that? Because I did go there seven o'clock yesterday morning and took pictures and just so I could verify this in my mind. Is that store split directly in half or no? Is it three quarters as some of the diagrams indicate? It's three quarters of their space. Other diagrams indicate it's fifty fifty. And from what I seen outside, it was in half. And if if this is such the two thousand and three agreement, they'll they'll be the only ones that change the continuity of that entire earth colored plaza, if you will. And I did take pictures to share with the board just in case. But my question is, is it down the middle? Does it affect that in this two thousand and three approval that he's speaking of? You're I don't know when the last time your code was changed for. That's not, but the code has changed maybe every ten years or twenty years. So if it wasn't the same company is my point. Barnes and Noble is following the continuity. They're not using their their colors, their traditional colors, so to say. AT&T is not using their traditional colors. They are conformant to the earthly colors of the entire aesthetics of that plaza. So my point is is it? If they withdraw the application, there's nothing, and this is a mute conversation. But my point is, it's a beautiful aesthetically pleasing plaza. And it's something that us Town of Ulster residents had to be proud of for a very long time. And it would just be a shame if all of that was lost. It has a uniqueness to that plaza.
Why is this going to the planning board? I think that will answer her question.
Yeah, it's my my understanding that it was going to have to go to through the planning board for the color blue. I guess both the color and the size. So I think I guess the planning board would sort of be ruling on whether or not that was acceptable from from an aesthetics. But but to that point, when my team was doing the research, and and I don't mean to sound combative, I thought they found.
Nor by. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no. I thought they found that Panera Bread and and some other tenants did sort of sprinkle their their brand colors within the facade in a sort of tasteful way. And there were, I think I had in our presentation, maybe two or three representations as well. So I just I don't know if that helps or not. And it is a beautiful shopping center.
It's gorgeous. I have a question for counselor. Jason? Jason? You're not watching the Yankees, are you?
We're in a bad area. I believe I think Jason has poor service where where he's located.
Yeah, and he's on mute. He might have taken a beat a bathroom break. I I do have a question about the variance that was granted while we're waiting for Jason. May I, Mr. Chairman?
We're going to be all on the same page with this variance thing. I want to make sure is it the town board approved it? Is it law? Is it a recommendation? You know, I want to see the difference between the two.
Well, it's it's not a law. Okay, this is this is a variance. They granted one, two, three, four, five. They granted six variances in one meeting to six different aspects of the plaza.
In two thousand.
In two thousand and three. So it's variance for these particular spaces. So once they vacate, because we're going to be your, I'll warn you right now, you're going to be seeing Burlington come through because they want a bigger sign than Barnes and Nobles has. And so they're going to be wanting a variance also. Because so these variances, I mean, Applebee's Applebee's actually got four variances for their location. Panera Bread got two variances for two more wall signs. Talbot's got an additional sign. Bed Bath &amp; Beyond got a hundred and sixty-one square foot variance for their sign. And Barnes and Noble got a ninety-two square foot. By the way, Kevin, I did need to to do that math because I'm kind of rusty in my high school algebra. Right, if that's what it took.
Most of the stores that Warren just mentioned are double the size of what this store is. You're sharing this store with Pier One, was it with Spectrum?
They have the five below will have the lion's share of that store. Spectrum took a smaller portion of that, and they took all of what was Sally Beauty.
All right.
Yeah, it's a rather decent sized space. It's not quite an anchor, but it's not quite the small space. It's sort of in like a sub anchor, if you will. So it is. And and I will say, we could go through the deck if you guys would like. I have no issue with that proportionately what five below is asking for as a percentage of the facade is still fairly significantly less than than the anchors. I can show that visually if that would be helpful or or even necessary. It's totally up to the board.
Andy?
I I I still want to get back to the variance from two thousand and three, and I don't mean to belabor this. I just the I I just want to be clear, and we should ask Jason, is this go with the tenant or does it follow through with the the space? And and I feel like this is a completely different ball of wax. You know, it's a it's a different tenant that was in there from two thousand and three. Was it Pier One, the original tenant? It's a less space. I I mean, you know, I I didn't move back into the area until two thousand and six. So I you know, I'm trying to get, you know, I get that. So, um, I don't know. I just didn't. The color is going to be up to the planning board. Again, that's not us, but I love.
I would like to hold a Jason on this before we before we leave, so we have our questions answered.
The the letter of the variant, I will read word for word. Unidentified tenants. Variants permitting future tenants to use ratio of two square feet for every linear feet of wall space. So that is linear wall feet of space for tenant space. So if their store shrinks, their sign shrinks.
Okay.
If their store gets bigger, their sign gets bigger. And these are these are definite. This is a future tenant. So this is not. This is not a variance that because that was a Talbot space, and it was the Pier One space. And it's now smaller than either one of those.
Is this from the state codes that you're reading this to us?
I'm reading this from the variance granted June third of two thousand and three.
Thank you.
So generally speaking, the variances, area variances would run with the use. And if the use is no longer utilized, then a variance would expire by operation of law. That's kind of was a unique situation, I think, in two thousand and three. I'm not sure we would do it the same way now. But Warren, have we generally followed that? Is everything, all the signs in compliance with that with that variance from oh, three?
Currently, yes.
Okay.
Well, the question I have for you, Jason, is is that apparently the gentleman's here and feels that it's only two square feet difference. So he would basically, I, sir, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't want to put words in your mouth. That he would remove the variance request on his our end and just maybe they could find two square feet someplace in there to just allow to be in compliance.
Yes. That's that's correct, sir. We would withdraw the application and conform to the previous variance footprint calculation of two square foot for every linear foot, and we would revise the the sign package accordingly.
Now, Jason, my question is that that means the ZBA is basically done with us, correct?
In that case, yes, the ZBA would would be done with this, and then it would still be a planning board issue regarding the color of the exterior.
Thank you.
And the letters would remain the fifty-eight inches of four point five feet, I believe that is, if I did my math right. Are they fifty-eight inches tall each letter for the five below?
Not. Some of them are are lowercase, and that would shrink in proportion. So the logo, we wouldn't want to kind of bastardize the logo. It would shrink in proportion to fit the square footage. And that brings up another question. They're in the in the town code, and perhaps we could speak to that. There was really no reference for exactly how it was calculated, whether you I know it's all over the place when we do these. Sometimes it's a rectangle around the entirety. Sometimes it's adding a box around each letter and adding it. Sometimes it's a different configuration of the the sort of spaces and shapes geometrically. Depending on how the board normally considers that or how the town considers that. If if they boxed each letter, we're probably conforming now at that size. Can can we speak to that just for us submitting a proper application?
We take it as a rectangle.
Great. Thanks, Warren.
Welcome.
Well, then, with that in mind, I think, sir, our business is concluded.
I appreciate it. We'll go ahead and advise five below to make application for the planning board for the blue. And we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Now, I got everybody here. Have you been checking the communications that we started this afternoon between Kevin, myself, Warren, and twenty-two other people? Yeah, there's been some good points brought up by the supervisor that, you know, and I'd like to see us be a little more proactive in situations where if we know we have some zoning laws that just don't seem to make sense to us. Like we see the fences coming in constantly, constantly, or in this case, how do you come up with this? We're always getting variances for these signs. Maybe it's time we should take a look at some of these laws and say, can we tweak them a little bit to bring them up to twenty twenty-one? Instead of nineteen ninety. Is it ninety or ninety-three when this code was accepted?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one. It's a big vast difference of way things were done then and now. So I want to give us a challenge here. If you guys feel like there's something there, it just doesn't seem to make sense. We're constantly dealing with it. You have to ask yourself, why are we constantly dealing with the same thing over and over and over again? Maybe it'd be better to us investigate. Can we advise the board to maybe change the law to match the requests of the citizens? I just like us to be a little more proactive sometimes instead of always responsive. We're the ones dealing with this more than anyone in the town board.
No, how how would we do that? Would we would we bring that up as a motion that we would want to? Do we discuss that on the side? How is that?
Well, we can discuss it after we finish our main business. Let's say if somebody has something want to discuss, would Gabby know? We'll put it on the agenda.
Okay.
No one says we have to be done in fifteen or twenty minutes. Well, tonight's a good. This is a really good working board right now. So that's why I want to do this. We have a lot of different opinions. We're not afraid to state them. I hope.
I don't think we've had that problem yet.
There are some people you see, you don't know if you're going to be the head of the nail the next day. I mean, I'm not that way. And I'm only temporary, by the way, so I'm working my way out of a job.
You're doing great.
You are doing great.
But I like challenges in that direction. If we see something, we think it just doesn't make sense. Well, we're the ones to correct it or to get the answer for people to come here. So we are all on the same page as well as for the board. If we see it makes no sense, well, gee, guys, you know, this hundred square feet really hasn't worked for the past thirty years. Can we bring it up a little bit? Well, they want to hear that from us. Okay, and I don't want to go there unless you guys feel comfortable with it. So we can all take a little bit of something like that.
I I have a question, Mr. Chairman, and and this has nothing to do with us as a board. It's more overall. I'm doing another thing, project in Sawardies and its cell tower height and that kind of thing.
Right, we had talked about that, yeah.
How I've only been on the board for a little over a year. Have you had to deal with setback and height variances for these mondo massive cell towers near residential areas?
I was just reading the zoning on that, and there's a lot of things on there that we don't have to deal with with heights on certain objects. It's right in the beginning of it, like like poles, power poles and things like that.
Yeah, but I mean, so.
Power is included in that.
And maybe this is a discussion for not our public meeting. Maybe we should have a session or whatever, but you know, I I'm finding that Verizon is coming through asking for or or any of the the cell companies, not necessarily Verizon, or the companies that are representing these these communications companies. And they're trying to put a hundred eighty foot, two hundred foot towers next to residential areas and asking for variances, especially at firehouses and whatnot in in a residential area. And because it's such a new technology, I feel like I actually met with the Senator's Office last week saying, you really need to fund the towns to look at their zoning laws with these new things and when they're coming in because zoning boards are being put in a very precarious situation. So we haven't had to deal with it because of our zoning with the town of Ulster, but it could be something on the horizon.
Yeah.
He is with the.
That actually states what to do with that. Things are not affected. I just messed up my screen. Jason, isn't there something in there with the very beginning or zoning ordinances? That states about towers, fly poles?
There is a provision that limits the size or the height of towers as well as any other structures regarding cell towers. The last two cell towers that have been approved by this town were located on town property. So the town is exempt from the zoning requirements in that regard. But if there were to be a new tower on private property, then yes, that it would the Verizon would have to come before this board for a variance of some of some type.
I'm seeing it in Sawardies because I own property on Industrial Drive in a in a parcel. A property owner forty-five feet away from my million dollar project wants to put a hundred and eighty foot tower, and it's going to go before the zoning board. And it's also bordering a residential line. You know, it's just that the zoning board needs to be prepared. And it's it's not come in front of us. But like you said, Jason, we could see someone coming down the road. And I do believe that it it's a bigger thing between us, and I think that 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 the towns need to look at that and be funded for it. That's why I went to the Senator. Senator Hinchey and said, you need to rally as much as because with the push from the governor and. as much as because with the push from the governor and from them wanting broadband, we're going to see more variances applied for on private property. We'll see it in Lake Atreen. We're going to see it in Ruby. We may not see it in the Town of Ulster per se close by, but we're going to see it in those outlying areas.
Well, there is something, like you said, on the books. That may be some, that's exactly what I'm talking about. You can check that out, bring it up, and we could advise the board. By the way, good job last, last time we met with those tiny houses. Do you remember that?
And I brought that up?
Exactly what I'm talking about. Kingston is trying right now to bring it into a, into a, I don't know how to describe it, so I, I have a lost word.
And the old Kings Inn site on Broadway, in the center of Broadway. Tore down a homeless hotel to build another homeless.
That was a nice bit putting it.
Sorry.
But anyway, they're, they're looking at these tiny houses for putting people who are homeless. As well as, I, I guess.
They're beautiful. Some of them are amazing.
No, no, they, but it's, 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 we need to get people out of the hotels. You're absolutely right. They need to get out of hotels and get into some kind of semblance of a home. People, we, we, the housing's, housing's hard.
It is. But instead of what we discussed, if it's at an R-ten area, it would have to come under the same zoning as R-ten. Or R-thirty, or am I right? Warren, that's what you said, or R-sixty if they want to put one in. They're still in the same thing in the area that they're in. They're going to combine those tiny houses into, I'll, I'll say, an apartment complex using tiny houses. How's that?
A village.
Yeah, so.
Community? I don't know.
It, it, that was an excellent question last time, and it was excellent response too. So, I think we're on top to do something good for the future. But don't forget, if it's something you want to talk about, put it on the agenda, and we'll research it. And I think, uh, this thing with the towers is something looking at us, whether we want to put our heads in the sand or not, it's coming. They'll be putting towers up in different places because we have some pretty high hills and, around the Town of Ulster, and that's perfect for towers.
Verizon approached me with my own parcel. And, you know, over the course of the twenty years or twenty-five years, it's, it's about three hundred thousand dollars for someone. So, it, it's a, it's a means, it's a, it's a way of income for property owners, and you're going to see more and more of them. Saying, Lord, when Verizon is looking for, and they will go for the low-hanging fruit, which is easier. They're going to look at Industrial Drive in Sawardies when they could put it up a mile up the road in Solite, but it costs them more money. You, you know, so.
He makes the world go round, and you know, like you said, they'll go after low, low-hanging fruit, least resistance, and they'll go after it.
They'll go path of least resistance.
So, thank you, everybody. It was a good job tonight. Think about the next time we get together. If there's something you want to discuss, if something that you've seen that annoys you in the so, and it just doesn't make sense because we're constantly dealing with it, maybe we should, again, we could get together, hammer it out, and advise the board, should we stay with this, or can we make a change to that particular zoning law?
Sign lighting, signage and lighting.
I will entertain to adjourn. Anyone want to make a motion to close the meeting?
Steve?
I, I, I messed up my screen. I got one little square. I see Warren sitting there going, God, I'm getting tired.
We had a motion from Mr. Schulz. We need a second.
We'll, we'll second it. All, all in favor? Aye. Good night. God bless everybody. Good work.
Bye, good night.